But the Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2019. At this point in time, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, back to the agenda, back, like to move on to item four, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 5, 2019 Special Board of Education meeting?
Motion, second.
Okay, any questions, comments, revisions? Okay, there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, myself? Yeah, okay. And then can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 17, 2019 Board of Education, six o'clock meeting?
Motion.
Okay, a second, okay. Okay, any questions, comments, changes, revisions? Okay, there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, myself? And then can I have a motion to approve the June 17, 2019 Board of Education, seven o'clock meeting?
Motion, second.
Okay, questions, comments, revisions, changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, myself?
Myself, abstentions.
Okay, so, all set. Okay, next item on the agenda, item five, inviting receiving public comment and communications. Christine, if you could.
The following.
Then we will move on with the agenda. Thank you very much. Next item, item six, consideration of the Superintendent's Report, six A, Convocation Highlights.
So, we had a really successful convocation this year. The focus of convocation was on emotional intelligence. Dr. Mark Brackett from Yale, the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence and a professor in the Child Study Center at Yale was our presenter, and his presentation was informative, interactive, and aligned to our focus on social and emotional learning in Farmington. And the gist of it was, you know, understanding our own emotions and the impact of our emotions as educators, as well as the ways in which emotions promote learning, engagement, and achievement are very, are vital to our students' success. So, we start with ourselves and then we work with our students on helping them to also identify their own emotions. So, when we do focus on emotional intelligence, we create the conditions for all members of the school district to thrive and feel valued and a belonging. And the work that we're engaged in right now and our convocation speaker really will help us to launch our recommendations to, we had a year-long study of social and emotional learning, and Kim and Lori Singer had, you know, were co-facilitators of that group. We had teachers and administrators from all schools involved, and so soon, the board will be reviewing that report and all of the recommendations. So, to have Mark Brackett here for our convocation was a nice launch to a year where we're really focused on social and emotional learning with, you know, a laser-like focus on equity as well. We also heard from Kim Millar, who was our 2018/19 Teacher of the Year, and she shared a really inspiring presentation that reframed the concept of time and the importance of the investment of time that we make as educators with our students and our colleagues. And she included a really wonderful video that had student messages of gratitude to several teachers. They were middle school students and they were making reference to teachers, you know, in their K-8 education here in Farmington, so that was a really special part of her presentation. Jim McNamara, who's our FDA President, also focused his message to his colleagues and administrators about our collective story as well as individual stories that we possess. And he reinforced the importance of knowing one another and our students deep, at a deeper level, so that we can truly celebrate the unique gifts that everyone in the school district brings to the work each day. And then Chris, also.
But for the record, I, due to the vagaries of the TSA screening process, I made my flight by the skin of my teeth that time.
Did you? I don't know how he did it, but he was able to address the whole faculty, and he praised Farmington educators for their impressive outcomes. And these outcomes are only achieved through the collaboration with our students, faculty, staff, and our parents. And his messages also reinforced Dr. Brackett's message about the importance of focusing on our own well-being so that we can be our best selves for our students every day. And then Sophie Giuffria, did I say it right?
Giuffria.
Okay, Farmington High School Student Representative did a fabulous job. She highlighted the importance of our core beliefs, but especially the core belief of relationships matter. And her speech was all about gratitude and the importance of relationships that we all share, and she highlighted different events in her education here in Farmington that were real highlights, and they were all based on the relationships that she had with faculty here. And it's always very special to hear from our students at convocation, so that was very nice. So, it was, it was a successful, uplifting convocation this year, and I can't believe we got it done within the time limit we had, because Dr. Brackett had a 90-minute presentation. But it was, it was wonderful. And I think everything that we've done after convocation has really reinforced that work, and everything we will be doing throughout the year will reinforce emotional intelligence and social-emotional learning.
Okay, good. Any questions or comments for Kathy? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, six B, School Facilities, Summer Maintenance and Building Repairs.
So, as you know, we had a very, very busy summer, and we appreciate the board's and the town council's support in the budget for these projects and our community's support through the referendum of all of these facility projects. And these are all based on a K-8 review that we did of facilities, and we're just thrilled that in two years in a row, we've been able to accomplish a great deal. So, and I have to welcome our Assistant Superintendent, Alicia Bowman, to the table. And Alicia is here to, you know, answer any questions that you have relative to this particular report, but we do list by school all the projects that occurred this summer, and there are quite a few.
It is quite a list, and yeah, it's a pretty impressive list. I don't know if you have any questions about it or anything in particular, but the majority of our buildings now have the security vestibules, which are in the completion phase, and West District had the most significant renovation, and Noah Wallace's is near completion. And then we're just starting to engage in the process for East Farms for the coming year.
Bill?
This question, I know two years ago, we approved the massive electrical overhaul at Union School. That hasn't been done yet.
That should be in here.
It has been done, yeah.
Okay, I don't see it here, if I am asking. Replacing all the electric. We put in a new breaker. Is it in here? Because I didn't see it. At Union School.
Yeah, I don't see it. But it, yeah, the good question.
I heard it, because I actually heard it was, because I heard from staff that it wasn't done.
No, but it has been.
Are you sure?
Rewiring the whole school, yeah.
And that has been completed?
And adding more circuits too, because there wasn't even enough. They couldn't even.
Okay, so that was done?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
That's my understanding, right, Alicia? That was done?
Okay, cool. So, we got a problem with the elevator there?
Along with, I don't know if you've seen the facade of West District, but if you.
It's beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, no, my god.
The elevator is not done yet, because we, we would get it done within this summer and next summer.
Okay.
So, I think that.
Which one, I'm sorry?
The elevator.
Elevator.
Right?
Right, and the reason why I bring it up, because that was one of our big, big, big urgency issues, because of the ADA issues presented by the elevator, if I recall.
Yeah, I think that we had to get the electrical done first, because the elevator couldn't, that was part of our problem, is just getting it to run with the limited electrical system that we had there. So, I remember Tim saying that they first needed to finish that, which, you know, that was right down to the wire. And then the next would be the, we would have the new elevator installed.
Thank you.
Yep. Andrea?
Yeah, I just had a question with the additional dining tables at IAR, you know, to alleviate with the overcrowding. Has that had any impact on scheduling?
Not yet, because we're just trying this out, but I think eventually, it could potentially have an impact on scheduling. So, this is the year that we, I don't believe that they've arrived yet, have they?
I'm not, I don't think.
No, right now, everything's split.
Right, yes.
Half of the lunch.
Yes, that's what they did.
Goes outside and half of the lunch stays inside.
Exactly. So, hopefully, having the extra tables will help, yeah, and give us more flexibility.
Additional comments? Bill? Kristi, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, there's just so much to read.
Okay.
It's a lot.
Well, take your time. Alicia, welcome to the table, and thank you for the update, and, you know, thank you for overseeing these efforts. This is always an important time for us to knock off a lot of these projects, and especially given, you know, the security vestibules and everything else, there's a lot of big, you know, not just a season, a year with low-hanging fruit, but some big-hanging fruit. So, it's, it's good to see we're getting there.
And we'll have a facility tour scheduled for the board, for those who are interested.
Kristi, anything else?
So, it does say that, yeah, that the tables will arrive by August 30th, so they're just not here yet.
I haven't seen them, and I did hear exactly what you said, Kristi, about the split wave right now, so I don't.
Yeah. Lot of work. It's not the security one at IAR, though, it looks very.
Mm-hmm, we do it.
It's good to know it's, you know.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. Excuse me, item six C, Standards-Based Curriculum Work, Summer 2019.
So, this is an annual report that you receive, and I know that Veronica, our Director of Curriculum, is here, and Kim is here, just to give you an overview of all the curriculum work that occurred this summer. And Veronica was very, very busy all summer long.
And still am. That has not ended. So, you can see in front of you, so I won't read the report to you, because you can see it, but I certainly will take any questions, but before I do, I just wanted to emphasize a couple of themes that I thought would be more important to sort of say what we're striving for, what we're trying to accomplish through these projects. One thing that's not a theme, but just something that I'd always want to say and mention, is that not only is the summer writing that we do, writing curriculum for the following year, and teachers do it throughout the year, but it's also great PD. I mean, I'm a real believer that you learn the work by doing the work, and so there's a real benefit to teachers in this district really having experience writing it themselves, working on it together on teams, rather than purchasing some sort of curriculum or something like that, because you get the double benefit that, you know, teachers feel empowered, that they're creators, but they're also learning at the same time. So, again, we're never going to be done with curriculum development. I will be in front of this table every year, talking about new projects that have been done, but it sort of has that double purpose. So, in terms of the themes that you should know about that impact curriculum these days, I came up with a couple that I think are the main drivers of what we're trying to do. And so, one is this emphasis on real skills and real work, and having the real skills and real work be as close to what you'd be doing in the real field as possible, and a real emphasis of changing, I think that we have, we're sort of in a time when there's a lot of sort of counterintuitive things and juxtapositions going on, but one is from consumers to producers. So, I think in the past, students have been seen as the consumers of information, and now, the more and more of the curriculum work we're doing is putting them in the seat of being producers of new content, products, things that can really impact the world. And I don't mean like, oh, they're going to invent the cure to cancer or something like that, but I do mean that they're somehow going to impact either a local community or to the, you know, lowest level in terms of, it doesn't have to be a huge, but somehow it impacts something that's going on in the community or in the school, or real work for real purposes, rather than, I'm handing this over to the teacher so the teacher can put a grade on it. So, that's one of the themes that you would see in whosever work, whether it's the elementary school or the high school work, that's a theme across. Another theme that I think is important, that's really impacting the work these days, again, back to this idea of counterintuitive, as you know, we're standards-led, our assessments are tied to standards, and a lot of people would read that as we're standardized, and that students are getting a standardized education. And I always explain it, that it's the exact opposite of that. That's what people think, but yet, it's the opposite. By having very clear standards and targets, you have a ton of flexibility now in how students can represent what they know and even how students can access what they know. So, for example, we know that it's this particular reading standard, but it doesn't mean every student has to enter into it at a high reading level. It could be at the reading level that's appropriate to them, and they don't have to represent it in this, they're learning in the same exact way. They can represent it in a way that they're showing you that they're meeting the standard, but not necessarily that it all looks the same. Now, of course, as if it's a writing standard, you can't make a diorama, you know, I mean, like, obviously, there's, there's that part of the picture, but certainly, to me, the beauty of standards is that it leads to much more differentiation and teachers being able to assess individual students where they are and then bring them to the next level. With that also means that there's a lot more choices, so you'll see in our curriculum that there's a lot more choice in the curriculum, because it doesn't have to be the same exact book, it doesn't have to be the same exact reading. And I think that this also helps in our equity efforts and lots of other things that this is tied to, that people aren't all feeling like they have to read one certain canon, although there are times where I would say that there are certain things that all should read, because it's made culturally relevant or that, so I wouldn't swing too far one way. I always try to strike that balance of encouraging this, but let's hold on to these things too. So, I wouldn't say that we're going to, you know, swing one way too far, but these are certainly things that are driving the way that we think about and write our curriculum. I'd say a third big theme too is, and maybe you've seen it in the recent literature, is that there's been a big emphasis on, you know, expert learning, and so I think that's why we got into this specialization and different subjects and courses, but I think there's a lot more now that we know about integration and how beneficial that is. So, you'll see, especially, I guess, I'm going to admit right now, this is our hardest, this is the one we struggle with the most, this is the hardest one to achieve, especially once they get to Irving Robbins, where everything's separated into different courses, but certainly at the elementary school, and we do try, I mean, we try, so it's a theme of what we're trying to do, it just gets harder. But this idea of expert to sort of more generalists, but with the right background knowledge and core knowledge behind it, is another thing that we're really talking about. And as I said in the beginning, it's more, it's been in the, sort of in the general sort of reading list right now, there's a book called Range, and a lot of people have been reading the popular literature of Why Generalists Triumph in a Specialized World, so there's a lot of sort of, and they relate it to things like even sports, that usually these sports phenomenons don't only train in one sport, that it's very dangerous actually, because you're overtaxing the same muscles, and you're not trying out different muscles and really just sort of learning about how to use your body in all different ways. So, they're actually finding that people who are really great at their sports are generally people who had lots of different sports. So, I think this kind of, I'm giving a sports example and a sports analogy, but really, that's what we've been talking about in curriculum design too. How do we pull lots of different things together so you can act flexibly in all these different areas in order to learn? And then, the fourth theme that I wanted to highlight, and this, again, cuts across K through 12, but you'll also see that we offered a technology workshop in the summer, this idea of technology, not as a substitution for what we did before, but really to enhance the learning, and that you're doing things that you couldn't do without the technology before. So, and this kind of cuts across all the themes that I talked about, because when you think about technology that way, students can be more self-regulated, make better choices, they can, they have access to wider information, more experts, and then they have access to wider audience for their work as well. And so, those are really the themes that I would say that we think about and try to incorporate into, into our work. And I think that, as I started, stated in the beginning, it's re-energizing for teachers. I think you saw from the numbers there, we have high participation, more than, I would say, you know, every year, it seems to grow, and so really good participation, and I think even though the institutes are a whole week past school ending, there's a lot of enthusiasm and energy, and there's like, this is like standing room only in the summer, like, there's not enough tables and chairs, so people are spread out all the way to the back, and those sitting tables there, so you can just imagine all the energy of all the teachers in this room, and then there's another large academy at West Woods Elementary School as well, full of teachers. So, we, great summer, you can see the projects that were accomplished. I do want to also point out now, before, you know, you find out about another way, but sign language was one of the projects we had on the docket, but we were not able to offer, again, the course this year, so that was not written, so you don't see it. You know how I always say, you're going to see this like several times, first I'm going to ask you for the money, and then I'm going to show you which projects, and then I'm going to come back and tell you which projects were done. So, that's one of the ones that didn't make it all the way to completion, because we weren't able to staff for it. It's really hard to staff for a point two, so I just wanted to let you know that that project was not done, but generally, all the other projects were done and done well. I'm still in the process of reviewing them, and CCC will be meeting this Wednesday, and we'll be looking at them there as well, because there's a whole review process with lots of people with eyes on it. A couple, one last thing I just want to say too, this year, I think you'll hear more about the Capstone and Aspire, that's our senior year, and junior and senior year mastery-based requirement credit, so I just want to give you a little preview of things that you'll hear about in terms of curriculum and themes this year. Of course, a refreshed vision of the graduate, you know, it's time, the board goals, you may have also seen the video, do they see the video yet? Have they seen the video?
No.
Oh, a surprise, you'll see a video. And you'll be involved also in a process similar to the one that teachers were involved with, but community will be involved with it, parents and students. And everyone will get to see Kathy and Chris.
And we will not be accepting any comments. There'll be no feedback on our performance.
Frame by frame, we can go. And of course, and I alluded to it before, but I also think that you'll, it's been, you know, several years now since we've had our Equity Matters theme, and so I think you'll also hear about more themes of what we're doing to address equity in our curriculum. So, anyway, that's a preview of some of the themes that I think you'll, in addition to the ones I mentioned, but the ones that I think are going to drive our work this year and then forward. So, none of that was in the actual report, the report is just sort of the nuts and bolts of what was accomplished, but I'll take questions on any of it.
Well, thank you, Veronica, you know, we appreciate getting the color behind the report, so we appreciate every, all your comments. So, Kristi?
So, I'm sorry, but I am intrigued very much so with this sign language situation.
I had a feeling you might be.
So, because I know a lot of students that are.
I know.
Are really wanting to do this, not only just, not only students that just really want to learn it, but other students that a language necessarily isn't something that they could handle, but they might be able to handle sign language, you know, that is something that they could process better. So, I would like to know what we can do, like, there's, if there's something creative with different, like, getting it with, I don't know, I don't know everything that you know, and I know that you guys have tried.
Yes.
But I really, really strongly, like, feel very strongly about this program that we did vote in, and, you know, I want, this is the second year that a lot of students are getting disappointed, so I want to know what we can do, if we, like, what we can do.
I did speak with the Assistant Superintendent and Avon, because they also have been looking for a very minimal part-time person to staff, an enhancement of a program that they do have. And so, we decided that together this year, we're going to look jointly, because if you were to combine their needs and our needs, we would be able to offer someone a more significant position that might be more attractive. So, that's our next creative strategy to approach this staffing need that we have, that we share your interest in. We do have a lot of students who've come to us and said, you know.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard from students.
They've signed up for it, and, and so it's just very disappointing that, again, we couldn't make it happen, but we, we have not lost hope, and we have a new strategy going forward, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Now, Kim, just, is that more driven by the fact that we only had, we were looking for a point two, is there, is there not available teachers in the marketplace, or what's it a function of?
Well, I think it's a little, it's a little of both. Yes, it's, it's a very small, part-time position, but also, you know, it's hard to find, we can find people who know sign language and could probably teach sign language, but they're not certified in the state of Connecticut to be a high school teacher. So, that's, that's the, you know, difficulty.
Have we looked at even, like, hearing impaired schools?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Liz, you had your finger.
That was going to be my question.
Okay.
I was going to ask if it was driven by the point two, or if it was driven by the.
Certification.
Certification.
Yeah.
And I guess I have a follow-up to that. Do you know how many, well, do, how many students signed up for it? Because you put it out there, right? Did you put it out for, and how many students signed up for it?
I'd be making it up right now, I can't remember. I don't know, yeah, I don't know, but it was, I think that.
The financial, enough.
Yeah, I think that the first year, we even had to cut it, because we only had the point two, so we didn't, and it doesn't matter, I mean, we couldn't find a teacher for point four either, so it wasn't like we could have just said, oh, do point four, but, so I think that it's pretty popular, and I think that we could certainly fill one, maybe potentially two classes.
Because that would be my question, that was my, that was kind of my question a lot, I think you and I.
Same, yeah, same.
Like, if it was, if we had enough students for point four, would it even matter? Like, would we still have the same problem finding a teacher that's certified in order to?
And I have to say, we were very creative with it. Two years ago, we tried everything, we tried to combine it with an audiologist, I don't even know what the word is, but an audiologist, somebody who can take care of the equipment and everything, and try to turn it into a full-time job that would then, you know, as more students get to higher levels, it could have grown into more sign language and all that, because that's the other hard part about it, that we're looking for a point two now, anticipating though, over time, it may grow. So, you need just the right person that's like, yes, right now, a point two works, and I'm going to stick it out, because I'm going to grow with this program, and that's how other places have done it, and they just always, in all the cases we know about, it was somebody who got, they just kind of got lucky, they had the right person at the right time, who might have been a mother returning to the workforce, the point two, then the point four, and then the point six worked as the children grew, that kind of thing. So, I know of two cases of laboring towns, that that's how they accomplished it. So, it's just a very specific kind of, very hard-to-staff thing, so I think that what Kim's talking about is probably our best bet for trying to move this forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Until we run into problems that we need more and more, but we'll, we'll take that as it comes, I'll, we'll deal with that as that comes.
Bill?
Thank you. Two points out, first of all.
Hi, sorry, I keep coughing, but I'm getting over a cold.
I'm having a hard time too. So, one, first thing is a kind of a micro point, tonight, we had in public comment a concern about, it's a little bit different than what you're here for, but you're the Director of Curriculum, so I want to kind of convey it to you. Another concern about the delivery of the math curriculum at the junior level, junior high, junior, junior year math, for another issue, and this is the second year in a row I've heard of concerns about how we're delivering the math curriculum, various aspects of the math curriculum to the juniors. So, I guess my, my concern is, and it's not something I ask you to answer for today, more just to kind of bring it to your attention, is it's, you know, just stressing the, you know, one thing Scott did this year, I thought was excellent, which I, you know, no disrespect to Bill, but he sent out like an FAQ, kind of like to parents via mail, which, you know, like places to go if you have specific issues with specific questions, if you have a pressure with the curriculum, you go to the curriculum department, things like that. My point is, is that with respect to the math junior year, it does seem like there's some gap communicating with parents as to what's happening, what we're doing, what we might be piloting, what we might be trying differently. This is, again, like I said, the second year, this has been an issue, so I just bring that to your attention, and hopefully, we can do a really good job of trying to explain as, you know, parents are dealing with that, because that's, it's junior year is a stressful year for most parents anyway. I'm lucky, I'm past that now, but at least with one.
Yeah.
So, I just, I just ask you to be mindful of that, and just kind of put that as a pin somewhere, and think about how we can handle that, you know, I don't know, if you have any thoughts on that. The other thing that concerns me, and this is, again, it's not you, it's more of what's going on in society, how your job and your job is so much harder now, and I don't know how, because I listened to what you were saying about what you're trying to do every summer, try to expand and do things. What I worry about, and I just, I ask this of you, is do you feel like, or are you ever concerned that what you're doing in terms of developing curriculum, really trying to be at the forefront of it? Are you concerned? Are you concerned that the parent community may not be ready to fully appreciate or understand what it is that you're trying to accomplish? Because what I find is that there is sometimes skepticism, to the things you're talking about tonight, you know, like the thing that struck to me, which I think is a great idea, you know, you can achieve and make an assessment by doing something in the community, as opposed to, you know, hitting in a test, right? A lot of parents aren't ready for that, they just, they just aren't. And so, you know, what I worry about as we develop that curriculum is skepticism, if not right, even hostility, to what, which I think our board would probably agree is probably a good idea, and the curriculum committee certainly would promulgate that, you know, it's not something we do lightly. What I worry about as you develop this curriculum is that you might be too far ahead. So I just, I don't know how you handle that, what do you do with respect to the parent community, you know, internally with staff, you know, the professionals, they do a great job with it, right? But it's more about the, it's that forward-facing aspect of the curriculum development that worries me, as you, as you develop this stuff. So I just, you know, what, some thoughts on that maybe? Either one of you, either one of you.
I want to start.
You're shaking your head, so I don't feel like I was like missing a point.
No, I mean, I think that a challenge for all of us, not just myself and Veronica as administrators, is providing the right kind of communication, and not just one-way communication, but having the opportunity for dialogue and for conversation is really challenging, because parents are busy people, and so it's, you know, I worked last year with our communications specialist on ideas and pointers for how to get some of these messages out to parents, how to engage parents in thinking about the future of learning, if you will, and it's a challenge, it's a real challenge, and no fault of anyone's, it's just a challenge trying to have that, that dialogue. So, one thing we're looking forward to this year is the process that we're putting into place to have stakeholder engagement sessions around the refreshed vision of the graduate, because that would be an exciting opportunity to structure a conversation around some really easy-to-read, quick and understandable resources out there that are shaping our thinking about where our students' futures will go, and how we need to prepare them for that. So we did things like, we took a look at job postings out there in the employment world, it's fascinating. We looked at an international paper on the learning in the year 2030. So we're trying to think forward into the future, and crystallize like the important information so that we can share it with others, and think about, you know, if collaboration is the number one skill that employers are looking for, then how can we give students experiences in school where they are going to learn how to effectively collaborate? And what does that look like, and how can we ensure that all students are meeting our standards? But I would say the challenge is figuring out the right way to have that conversation with the community and with our parents.
Well, as one of the, you know, the opportunity with the refreshed vision of the graduate, I think is really what we're kind of getting at here in terms of how we can convey, because we talk about teaching in 2030, I mean, we have those kids now in kindergarten, right?
Right, yeah.
And, but I think it's, but it's a pretty frightening thought though, because now, it's like now we're really deep into the 21st century, right?
You're not making this feel any better on the table here, Bill, really, you're not.
I've given up coloring my hair. But, but my point is, is that, I just, that's, if I were to report to you, the one central consistent theme of what I would consider to be a valid, I don't want to constructive criticism, is that parents don't fully understand or appreciate the difficulty of that which it is that you're doing, to try to stay cutting edge, right? But to still deliver it in a way that is common to people's experiences, right? Because parents are, you know, the parent committee is just, they're not, they're not in the world that you're in, and their kids are, in a lot of respects, and they're ahead of the curve maybe then, more so than the parents are. And that's probably the most frightening thing of all for many, many parents, and that's where you get the skepticism and the hostility, it's not because they, you know, they're, I think there's the fear, right? And we see a lot of that in our world all the time.
We understand that, we actually study it, I mean, there's all sorts of research about change and how difficult it is, and there's actually a grieving process that goes along with any kind of change, but, but, you know, we also know what our students are gonna need out there, and really, we have a lot of students come back and visit us every year who are out there and talking about how, what we taught them served them well, in terms of those kinds of skills and all of that, so we do keep our finger on the pulse of that, and we are cognizant of that, I understand that, and again, for me, as somebody who did well in school traditionally, like when it was a traditional kind of way, you know, it took some, you know, real thinking to say that that's, that really isn't the, you know, that's, today, that's not how I learn. I learn this, this way that we're trying to get kids to learn, and I think it's especially important now, because the students themselves have so many competing, like, opportunities and all that, that if we didn't make some of these shifts, we would lose most of the students in terms of, they really wouldn't be able to engage. So we are trying to make things that we know are gonna be intrinsically motivating, something that you're, you know, actually inventing or contributing to, that you have choice over and all that, in order to keep students wanting to move forward, and then you need the background knowledge, like you need to have a reason to need the background knowledge for, because we're not saying that background knowledge and content is not important, in fact, it's very important, but really, it sort of comes at the back end, it doesn't, it's not like front-loaded so that someday you can do this, it's like, someday you will be doing these things, so try to do a version of it now, and then ask the kinds of questions you need to ask, and learn the kinds of things you need to learn, in order to do sort of the amateur, oh, sorry, the amateur version of it now. So I think we're just putting that idea of, you know, of being a producer up front, and still saying, and now learn the content through trying to achieve that.
The fear though, will develop, because you said, you were clear, that, you know, the fundamental, you know, learning, the building blocks of the learning, you still need to have the fundamentals, right? But because you're trying to do this new thing, you're gonna emphasize that part which is new, I think, and people kind of think, well, they're de-emphasizing the fundamentals, you know, the reading, writing, and arithmetic, you know what I mean? And that's where I think the fear is, is that lack of, the breakdown in communication or understanding, and I want to be very careful what words I choose, because I don't want to suggest you're not communicating, because you absolutely are. This, that's where the disconnect is, I think. And I think the place it manifests itself more than any other place is in the grading policy, right? Because that's, and I'm not here to have a philosophical conversation, how we do, you know, grading, but I'm saying, so therein lies the rub, right? Especially, we see that more acute, because the pressure's more acute at the high school level, right? But it's, but it's true even in fifth and sixth grade. So, I mean, that's, that's, I think, I'm just kind of giving you my
Right, and so, just, just more
Concerns about, concerns about, reading the curriculum report, listening to what you had to say, those are the things that kind of jumped out to me, was concerned.
And just more on that, when you, when you say that, I think that, you know, in terms of, the grading does match this, in terms of we've really communicated very clearly with ourselves, with the teachers themselves, and with students, what the standard is that we're trying to achieve by that. So it's not, this is test number one, it's, these are the standards, so if anything, we're more, you know, like I said, clear on what the standard is, and then giving an actual mark on the standard, so it's actually more information than people have ever had before, and actually more grades than people have ever had before, so in terms of that, and so I know what you're saying in terms of somehow that maybe is not seen that way, because it is different than what people have seen, but I think that, you know, as they see the, the, the level of depth that they're getting in terms of information that they can have about the student themselves, which I think is the most important piece of it, the teachers, so that they can make sure that they're addressing where the gaps are, but then the parents as well, as a communication device to know. So now, when I get in a B in my English class, I know, I know why, it's not because, oh, you just didn't do well on assessment number one, whatever that was, it was the, this is where I see that it could be improved, it's in this part of the writing strand, and that's exactly where it is, and we can focus on that, and you're, you know, and improve there. So, I actually, yes, these all go together, but I think that people will see it as, as an enhancement. And again, that is the feedback, that once people see it, they are appreciative, and it may take a while, I think that there's a lot, we could point to many examples in all sorts of areas in life where that, that's the case, that it just takes a couple, a little, a little while to, to sort of see this is beneficial, and quite honestly, a lot of people are working really hard in order for us to be able to do this. So, so many teachers are working extraordinarily hard so that families and students and parents can have this level of deep information and really engaging work for students to do.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would just add that in some ways, it's good that we
[coughs]
from parents, because it's actually then happening in classrooms, you know, so often districts have a lot of strategic documents, and it never makes its way to the instructional core, which is the interaction between the curriculum, the teacher, and the student. And what we often see is a lot of documents and not a lot of impact in the instructional core, and in Farmington, we start with the instructional core, because it's what students experience every day. We don't want to say students are problem solvers and never get a chance to problem solve in a class, or students are collaborators and never get a chance to collaborate in class, or they're self-directed and they never get to set their own goals and make a plan to get there, and also advocate for themselves to get the right support. So I think that, you know, it's, in some ways, that's how district and school improvement works, is that, you know, improvements are made and we're communicating, but it's really what students experience on a daily basis, that's the most important to us. And, you know, we've talked to the board, and I've gone out to PTOs and talked about the major shifts we've made over the last decade of having a vision of the graduate for 10 years. I, I have also told you that districts are just now creating their vision of the graduate, so we are about a decade in many ways ahead. NIASC requires a vision of the graduate now, and we were the second district in Connecticut to ever create one with the community. And we talk about assessment, you know, we were, it was always like assessment of learning for us in school, and now it's assessment for learning, that assessment is actually part of the learning process. And in teaching and learning, we went from a very teacher-directed approach, which we experienced, right, as, as students in school, to a more student-centered approach. Well, that's a huge shift to make as a school district, sometimes you can make that shift in one school or in a department, but to make that shift K-12 is extraordinary in a school district. And in social and emotional learning, we've really shifted to more self-regulation and self-managed classrooms, where everyone in the classroom has a voice and can help to establish the norms and establish, we're even looking at a new way of establishing norms, where we, we really come from it from an emotional standpoint, like, how do you want to feel as students when you come to this classroom? Well, I want to feel safe, I want to feel valued, I want to feel respected. Well, norms can be developed through just that part of it, is how you feel, because if you do feel safe and valued, you're much more focused on learning, you're much more engaged in learning, and there's a lot of research behind that. And then I know I'm missing one, because there are four shifts.
You said them all.
I did say
Well, the content to the VOG
Yeah.
The VOG that our content has shifted to.
Because of the VOG, those are the major shifts that we've made, but I, I have gone out to schools and to PTOs and, and presented, and parents will say, "I know exactly what you're talking about, because my child does X, Y, or Z." So I'm, I'm happy to see that parents are talking about it, but I also want to be partner, we want to be partners with parents, so the more that we can join with parents, I think the VOG update is a great way to do it. We did the process with our faculty and staff the Friday, that early release Friday, and we modeled it after the way students learn in classrooms, so there was, as students are here in the audience today, and that we gave them lots of resources, and we want, you know, the faculty or parents or community members to explore those resources, and then give us feedback on what are those, what, you know, are those skills, those transferable skills that are gonna be most valued in college work and life today and 10 years from now? Because that's the process we went through in 2010, and we're gonna replicate that process. And, you know, it, I received really positive feedback from the faculty and staff, and just being, you know, given that opportunity to give feedback, and then that feedback's gonna be used to craft our new, our updated, I'm not saying new, updated vision of the graduate, because some of the elements of our vision of the graduate are very, very applicable today and in many years to come. So, we'll, you know, make tweaks to that VOG, but only through a process, process of engaging parents, community members, faculty, staff, the Board of Education, you know, because we want it to, and students, I can't forget students, students are always a part of it. And, you know, then we'll have something that reflects all the, you know, the voices of all community members, and then that will launch the next decade of improvement work after that. And that's from our speech, our
Our video, yeah.
That we did, that launches every session of this VOG update, so. I, I think the, we, when we launched our 2010 vision of the graduate, it was universally embraced, I remember, anyway, feeling like everyone thought, "This is exciting work, this is something that parents and teachers can all stand behind as important." But I think, Bill, you're expressing a disconnect between seeing a vision and knowing, well, how is that going to look different in a classroom? Like, what does teaching and learning look like that aims toward that vision that isn't exactly what we experienced? And so, it's understanding how these practices really are aimed to shape, you know, the work of the vision of the graduate.
Well, and the reality of it too, is the parent community that existed when we did the vision of the graduate has essentially aged out.
Yeah.
So now you have, right, so you have this parent community that sees a vision of the graduate, and there's a drift from what we, what we all, you know, those of us that were there when we did it
Been 10 years.
Knew what it was about, and knew, and couldn't agree with you more, there was a massive community buy-in, but by, you know, seven years later, there's a whole new set of parents that don't understand the rationale behind, all they see is, oh, now we're doing mastery-based education, that makes no sense to me, I don't understand how, you know, how that affects the grading policy, and then, you know, the nuts and bolts of the day-to-day life of a school, there's a disconnect from what the VOG was about. So, yeah, that's really spot on.
Just one more point too, but, you know, and, you know, because I do many reports for you too about data, but we do monitor all those outcomes very carefully too, and so certainly if there were some sort of dip somewhere or something like that, we're looking at it, but that has not happened. I mean, we have, you know, excellent outcomes in this way, and as you know, and you'll see it in probably a month from now, but, you know, the CWRA report, those kinds of skills too, so, you know, there's a lot of, and also, we do the surveys every year, there's a lot of, you know, good data out there too, but we do monitor that carefully, and we would be very careful in, in looking at all that to, we would never want to harm students in any way.
I don't want you coming away from this conversation thinking
No, I know, I know, so
And I support you 100%.
So we, we understand, you know, we do, we talk about this, and about all these things that you're bringing to our attention, obviously, we know about them and care about them and think about them, but also, you know, have a lot of, you know, expert knowledge about how learning happens, and we feel like we are benefiting the children of this community and, and helping them really reach their, you know, their desires, outcomes in life, and have the most opportunities that they can have in life. So, but anyway, thank you for the, I do enjoy, I do enjoy having these conversations, so anytime.
Yes.
Kristy?
I just, no, I would just, I, I'm in the point where I'm kind of, I do, I will admit, I am reluctant sometimes for the change, because, you know, I'll admit, my 10th year old, 10th grader definitely knows more than I do about a lot of things.
My, my kindergartner does so.
Being taught, like, I'll be honest. You know, and so, I mean, I thank you, because I am a hands-on learner, you know what I mean, so I appreciate a lot of this, I would just say, like, the one thing I would say is just like, you know, and I would just say, like, the one thing I would say is just like, you know, and you've heard it before, but the more communication to parents and like, literally like breaking it down communication, because you're, you're like, you're, like Bill said, you're going to have these reluctant parents, like, they don't want to see the change, you know, but that, I'm not saying that, you know, anyone is right or wrong here, but like, the, the best communication, you know, obviously, the better. Like, breaking it down and, you know, the more information for them.
Yeah. And just so you know, we are pretty balanced. I mean, there are schools I could show you that are way out there. Like, we were very incremental, deliberate, um, and thoughtful about the steps that we've taken along the way. Um, so certainly, you know, there are some things, you look at these schools, you're like, oh, I wish we could get there. But then you look at them and you say, well, but they're missing this piece. So I feel like we're always just trying to strike that good balance where, you know, you're, we want to push the project-based, but we don't want everything to be project-based, you know, like, so that kind of thing. So, again, we wanted, we want all the students to know the VOG, but we're not going to forget the content. There's a lot of content that goes, you're, you're not going to be able to argue about something intelligently and, uh, you know, reach communication skills if you don't have anything that you can argue about because you don't have any content knowledge. So, um, we're, we're not, we're not so far out there. We've, we've done this over the long haul and incrementally. Um, and so we think our students and our faculty, you know, are ready for this kind of work.
Students are ready.
Yes.
Yeah. That's why.
What's happening?
Any other comments? All right. Veronica, thank you very much for, and Kim and Bill, thanks for your comments. Um, okay, next item on the agenda, 6D, the school opening 2019, 2020.
All right. So, uh, we had our first day on August 26th and we welcomed back to our, welcome back over 4,000 students. Um, enrollment numbers really aren't official till October 1st, but we do, uh, provide you a snapshot of the first day of school, which was about 4,055 students. I know that's already changed because I've been monitoring enrollment, monitoring it, and we already are seeing some, uh, increases in particular schools. Um, and I, I do want to just thank our principals, teachers, secretaries, technology staff, our custodians, all staff members who just worked so diligently to prepare our schools to welcome back our students. We always want to provide a warm welcome to our students and families, and it's a lot of work, uh, on the part of all members of the school district community. Um, principals did report smooth openings. Kim and I were out at schools, visited all schools on the first day. We were able to visit some classrooms too, which was really nice. Uh, we welcomed about 40 new faculty members, uh, to the Farmington Public Schools. Uh, we also welcomed a new administrator at Westwoods, Katie Blor, Dr. Katie Blor, and, uh, welcomed two new assistant principals, one at IAR, Sue McMahon, and, uh, one at the high school, Russ Criss. And so I'm really excited about those new administrators. We also had some changes last year, which all of you are aware of too, but those are, uh, new to administrative positions. Uh, we also mentioned that Excel has about 430 students enrolled, uh, in the program and, um, you know, just really amazing to have them here this evening and also to just see how well that program continues to do over time and expand over time. So, any questions about our opening day?
Um, are there, are there changes in the enrollment that might be aberrational? Are we seeing anything that's popping up that we don't expect or is it just traditional shifting?
No, I think East Farms is something that is pretty extraordinary. So, uh, it says 467. I looked today, it was 470, 472 children. Um, that, you know, that is reaching complete 100 or even over 100% capacity. Uh, we have six kindergarten, six kindergartens-
Less.
-at, uh, East Farms, which is, yeah, I don't know when we had that many, if we ever have.
That's going to be a big class.
So that's, uh, different. And, um, you know, we, we'll just have to see, you know, how the year plays out, but we have very large third grades-
Yes.
-at that particular school.
Yep.
Um, uh, but we also have supports in grade.
Thank you. Any questions? Yep, Liz?
I don't, actually, I don't know if this goes in school opening or budget update, but I'll, I'll put it in school opening.
And if it doesn't fit, we'll push it down, don't worry.
Right.
If no one wants to answer it right now.
Um, I heard that the, um, FHS clock and bell was not working, uh, when school opened. Is that accurate? Like, that the, there was a problem with the bell system and the clock or something, that it wasn't working and needed to be fixed?
That I don't, I'm, I don't know. I can't into that.
And I didn't hear about anything about that either.
I was saying, you didn't, I was saying, I didn't hear that. I would, I would have heard that from them for sure.
Yes, there was, Liz. Because I, I came here, um, Wednesday or Thursday to hand in my son's-
Yeah.
... and, um, uh, they, they had to make announcements. The, the security guy had-
Right.
-timer and he had to announce time to pass.
Yeah.
So there was something with-
By Tuesday or the next, by, by, it was by Tuesday or Wednesday it was sorted, because I was there dropping off stuff for my daughter and it was working.
I think it was Wednesday was when it happened, so I-
So I just wasn't sure. Just, I just know that I, we're keeping track of all of the expenditures and problems at the high school, so I just wanted to know how much it costs. So if we could just keep track, that's all.
We've been updating the PA systems. Could it have been the update of the PA system?
Um, yeah.
I don't, I did, I can look into that, Liz. I haven't heard that, but I will, because we are tracking that.
Right. I actually didn't hear it from a student. I heard it from someone I met in town that knew someone that came to fix it, so I'd-
Oh, okay.
Well, I experienced it. His timer went off and he excused- It wasn't like a student told me. It was-
Reliable information.
Right.
My student actually didn't care.
We can clarify whether that was an expected part of upgrades or unexpected and whether it was an expenditure.
Right.
I'm not aware of that, but, yes, absolutely.
All right. So that, that's the only reason I was asking, because I wanted to know about the expenditure. So, and I know we're tracking that sort of thing about things that are going on at the high school as far as fixing things. So that's my, that was the purpose of my question. It really was, okay.
Um, just because I had reached out to Tim really quick. So the electrical-
Yes.
The rewiring is done.
Okay.
The electrical is not done because they had scaffolding in the front of the building and they have to actually dig.
The trench.
Yeah, to get the, uh, the updated.
That wasn't, the rewiring's done, but hasn't been set up.
It has, the electrical hasn't been upgraded yet. So it's-
So that could happen?
So the re-
The wiring was-
Is the internet wiring.
Okay.
The electrical is separate from that, hasn't been done, but is scheduled to get done. The tables are scheduled to come in September 13th for IAR.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I wasn't wrong.
No, no, yep. So I just wanted to clarify that. And that is also, the elevator needs a whole year lead time because of the elevator car. So he, that would be done in the summer.
Okay. Well, and the, if I remember correctly, the elevator money was just appropriated. So, I mean, that would have only been, the money was only available July 1st.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't have been able to order it until they had the money anyway. So I mean, that, okay.
Well, I know the electrical is like, big deal.
It is a big deal.
Even my dad.
And I can't, the-
We couldn't do the elevator two years ago.
Right.
That's right.
That's right. Thank you.
It was full of staging for the limestone project-
Yes.
-in front of the building, so they couldn't do the trenching-
They couldn't do the digging.
For the electrical.
Poor Tim. He's amazing.
I know. Buy his phone.
Eighty-five-year-old schools, what are you going to do?
Okay, any additional, uh, questions or comments for Kathy? Uh, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the board for central office administrators, custodians, everybody, teachers that gets our schools prepared and up and running for another school year. So I'm glad it went off incident-free or problem-free. So thank you very much. Uh, 6E, Engage Learning Update.
Okay. So there is a few that I would like to highlight tonight, so bear with me. So Union School highlighted a bulletin board, all the places we read, so you can go to Union and see all the places students and faculty read this summer. And West District highlighted, um, a really nice event. It, all of our schools have an open house the Friday before, but the PTO actually did a welcome back play date on the Sunday before school, which was really nice. And it goes along with the school's theme of all are welcome and be kind, uh, this school year. And they're really, you know, continuing to promote a culture of trust and belonging for all students. Uh, East Farms highlighted a, a display that they have, um, really inspired by Dr. Mark Brackett at Convocation, and it displays, uh, it's a butterfly and all the students, staff and faculty have name, their names written on it. And you can see that, um, they're really trying to promote positive emotions and, um, you can see that in the update.
I wouldn't mind seeing it.
Noah Wallace, um, they're actually starting positive behavioral referrals in, in their school. So when they catch students doing wonderful things that are aligned to, you know, being kind to one another, they're highlighting that. And then Dr. Huber takes a selfie with the student and they, uh, send that out on Twitter, which is really nice, and send something home to the child's parents. So FHS had a phenomenal event.
Phenomenal.
Kim and I attended and we were really wanting to compete.
Yes.
It was students only, but it was a rock, paper, scissors, change competition. It started off in, um, FHS Connect, which is our advisory program. They, all students competed. They brought in change, um, to, because we're going to be donating to, um, they haven't decided yet what they're going to donate to. I think it's over $2,000 that they raised.
Oh.
Um, but they, the students came in with just change and they just kept filling up as you competed. You gave your change to the winner and that, and it kept going until finally they went to the gymnasium and, um, students competed, uh, and we had one winner overall. But it was so much fun.
Lost our hearing for two days.
They all got a shirt, too.
Yeah, the great shirt that they gave out.
That was great.
Yeah, so that was really nice. And I think also the presidents of each class spoke a little bit, um, during that. And this whole theme of one school, one community, one us, and that was on the shirt. It was a very, very nice event and brought everybody together. And I thought it was just so brave to do that on the first week of school with 1,200 students. And it was, it, it was so much fun, so much energy. Um, IAR also had an opening week celebration, and this is the second year that they now put the flags up of each class, so 2024, 2025. And students talk from each one of the classes. They have representatives that really just express their hopes and wishes for the year. Really nice event. Um, and so those are just some of the highlights, or all of the highlights from the weekend, are the Engage Learning Update.
Great.
Great, thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments? All right, thank you, Kathy. Uh, next item, 6F, Professional Appointments, Retirements and Resignations.
So this is a larger report-
Than usual.
-because it includes all of our new hires. And Kim is going to go over this report quickly. And it also includes professional development.
Right. So this report does provide you with an overview of our recruiting, hiring, orientation process, as well as professional development at the beginning of the school year. Um, as you know, we begin recruiting in the spring prior to the school year. Um, and I just thought I would highlight a couple of the ways in which we do actively recruit for, um, talented, exciting teachers to join our amazing faculty. You know, we post vacancy announcements in the most, um, in websites most frequented by, uh, teacher candidates. But then we also have very strong connections with our university and college partners and we reach out to them and ask them to recommend, you know, their, their top candidates as always. Um, we go to recruitment fairs. We go to UConn, St. Joseph's. Um, we go to the Five College Consortium Recruitment Fair in Amherst, Mass. We go to the Minority Teacher Recruitment Fair. Um, we really are actively working to increase the racial diversity of our faculty. It's a huge challenge, um, shared by all Connecticut districts. Um, and so we've, uh, made some special efforts to reach out to universities beyond Connecticut who may have, um, a more racially diverse candidate pool, um, such as Manhattanville College and Fordham University. So we're trying and we've had limited, but some success that we're proud of. So, um, we want our students to see themselves in their teachers. That's very important. Um, so as you see in this report, the names of the, uh, new faculty members hired, uh, we had some challenging positions to fill this year. Some are considered shortage areas by the state of Connecticut and it's difficult to find qualified candidates in shortage areas. And oftentimes, um, because Farmington's reputation is widely known, we do have candidates who come to us from other districts, uh, specifically because they're attracted to the kind of environment we have here for professional learning and, and teaching excellence. Um, but these are candidates with lots of experience. And so, you know, we have a mix of, of teachers. I think in some districts, new hires are typically brand-new teachers to the profession, but we, we have a mix of candidates. Um, that does have an impact on our budget and I'll leave that to Alicia to talk about.
Thank you.
Uh, so we had, as always, a two-day new teacher orientation, um, program that began here in this room. Um, Kathy does a wonderful job welcoming our new faculty and providing them with an overview of our vision of the graduate and our core beliefs. Um, our Teacher of the Year speaks. Um, we always have, it's kind of the most charming part of the day. We always have a teacher speak who was in that seat the year prior and who talks about her first-year butterflies and experiences, or his. And, you know, it's, it's a, a sort of, um, affinity kind of talk for the teacher sitting there saying, okay, I, I'll survive, I'll make it to the next year and it'll, it'll be great. Um, and this year we also had two of our high school teachers who are in their 092 Administrative Certification Program. We had them do part of this presentation to give them some leadership experience as well. Um, so the day went very well and the second day, teachers are out in their buildings with their principals and teacher leaders, um, focused on more of the nuts and bolts. Veronica meets with her Curriculum Coordinating Council on that second, uh, first day in the afternoon and kind of sets the tone for the year and, and launches the, the themes of the work. Um, I think Kathy already mentioned that, uh, on August 30th, so this was our first time having an early release day on that Friday before Labor Day weekend, we engaged our faculty in a Vision of the Graduate, um, reflective protocol. And one might think that, you know, it's, it's right before Labor Day weekend, people would be swiveling in their seats to kind of look at the clock and say how much longer, and that wasn't what we experienced. Um, it was a, a dedicated faculty, very interested in the resources that they had the opportunity to, to read and discuss. Um, I think we kind of fanned out to, to participate and, and see how it went in the various schools. And it was just an uplifting and proud moment to see this entire district really engage in thinking about where we're headed in the next two years. Very thoughtful, reflective feedback that we captured in a Google form. And then, uh, this past week at DLC, all the administrators read through all the feedback and tried to synthesize the big ideas and get a sense of collectively what are some of the themes we're thinking about. And there was a lot of overlap and a lot of coherence in those themes. So it's looking to me very much like we have some good direction. And now we're excited to take that same experience, maybe, uh, scale it back a little bit, because we wouldn't have likely two whole hours to work with parents. But scaling it back a little bit and engaging them in that same work, um, I think we're all looking forward to that. So we had a great beginning of the year and a great hiring process, I must say. I, I go out and observe and visit all of the new teachers between now and hopefully the end of November. I've done a few visits already and I've got happy people doing great work with kids. And I think we had a very good hiring season this year.
Great, thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? Okay, well, thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, 7, Unfinished Business Budget, Impact Budget Update.
Okay, so that was a good segue.
Yeah.
We do have, you know, some, some lines that are currently troublesome, some that are expected and others that are, that are unexpected. Teacher salaries are trending up. As you can see, we hired, um, many highly qualified people with a lot of experience. And we had several areas that were, um, several of our vacancies were shortage areas. So, you know, we had to, um, be thoughtful and, um, again, wanting to ensure that we're, we're hiring the best. But there's certainly an impact that you'll see on next month's, um, financial report. Um, in addition, self-insurance- In addition, self-insurance has been significantly impacted with some catastrophic claims, so that is definitely an area that we're keeping our eye on. And special education, as you know, it's volatile and it's challenging. We've had, like we always do, new registrations to, new students to our district, we have students transitioning back to our district, and it's just, it's an area that requires a responsive, yet systemic approach, so that's another area that we are looking closely at. So next month, I'll have a more accurate picture to share, because it will have, you know, with the opening of school and where we are, it'll be a truer picture of where we really are, and I can share a more detailed update, but those are the areas that are certainly areas that we're looking closely at.
So over 40% of our new hires were in shortage areas, so that, that's unusual to have that high percentage.
What are the shortage areas? What are considered shortage areas?
Special education. Any, any position in special education, world language.
Sciences.
I think science.
Like specific, like physics, chemistry, or like?
Science.
Just science.
Some of the business, I don't know.
Yeah, so you can just go down and see all those areas. Mathematics, is that a shortage area, mathematics?
I don't think so this year.
So we get a list every year of what they are, and it depends on how many individuals are certified in the state of Connecticut, and that's how they determine it, the shortage areas. So.
We had a lot in special education.
Yeah. And that's why we have that discussion during the budget process, that often, you know, can we take certain positions and reduce them, because we anticipate someone with less experience, and we say in shortage areas, we don't do that, because typically, they're going to come to the school district, you know, with a lot of experience, and so we are really careful about that. But sometimes individuals might resign, and then they're making a certain level salary, and someone gets hired, and they have more experience, so that can happen, and then we have, you know, issues with that salary line, and this is, just happens to be a year where that occurred, and I do think it's just an excessive number of shortage area hires, so.
And a large hiring year in general, so the two combined.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to commend Vince and Kathy for, on a $65,799,000 budget, we returned $4,615 to the Town General Fund. Well done.
And I'll give Alicia some credit.
Come on, Bill.
You're a great July 1.
Sorry, I apologize.
It was weeks and weeks.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had handed that. My apologies.
Two hands. No, it's okay.
Good job, too. Get off the bat, you're already hitting out of the park.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Alicia. Next item on the agenda, new business. Next item, number nine, consideration, the Superintendent Financial and Operations Report. Can I have a motion to approve the end of fiscal year financial statement for June 30th, 2019?
Motion, second.
Okay. Any?
We just kind of discussed it, right?
Yeah, so any further questions or comments, or?
I should have made a comment before. Welcome, Alicia.
Thank you.
I should have made a comment before, I'm very sorry.
That's okay, thanks, thank you.
I forgot that I welcomed you unofficially in the break, but welcome, it's so nice to have you here.
Thank you.
And I hope you enjoy your ti, enjoy your time.
Thanks. I am, I am enjoying my time.
With us, glad to have you.
Thank you. Lots of questions, and although I can't, I did come in at the, maybe what some would consider the hardest or the busiest time of July 1, it was a good, it worked out well to be there, to see that part of the budgeting process, to help to think about moving forward.
Wait till February.
I know.
And you're getting off on a good foot, so the expectations are high.
That's right.
Running very high, Alicia.
I'm not messing around.
Next year, we're aiming for $2.
Do we have that in the minute? Please put that in the minute, $2. No change.
You're being generous.
You know.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, the motion to approve the end of fiscal year financial statement report for June 30th, June 30th, 2019, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Okay, it's approved. Next item on the agenda, item 10, reported the board chair updated committee meeting dates for negotiations. We are in the process of negotiations with FEI. Our next meeting is Wednesday at 4:00. At this point in time, we're making progress. It's been going well. I think the, just the temperature of the room and the tenor has been constructive, and we've been progressing nicely, so we'll see. We'll have more to report after Wednesday. We're kind of getting to the point where we're talking, a lot of it was up till now contract language, and we're now getting to sort of the meat on the bone with the salaries and the benefits, but it's been a productive and collaborative process, and we'll have more to report probably next meeting. Policy, Christine?
We have nothing scheduled at this time. I'm looking over the new, you know, the updated policies given legislation, so we'll be scheduling something in October so that we can bring it to the October and November meetings for it first and second.
Okay. Okay, communications, Ellen, well, we're looking at our newsletter, so we don't have to report in, we have the newsletter in front of us, so, I think, Ellen?
But a meeting will be getting scheduled, right?
Yes, we will.
Like this quarter?
Mm-hmm. And then curriculum, but we've pretty much addressed.
Scheduled for October 21st.
October 21st, okay.
West, Westwoods, the one at Westwoods. Is it Westwoods?
East Farms.
East Farms?
It just said it in my calendar, East Farms.
Yeah, East Farms. That's the night of our East Farms.
Oh, East Farms.
Board meeting. Before the board meeting.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. And then just, you know, dovetailing of new teacher reception, we've been advised by Mary, that's October 24th at 4:00 at Farmington Country Club, so we can meet, it would be great if everybody shows up and welcomes all our new additions to Farmington. It's always a nice event to welcome all the new teachers, it really is. It'd be a big party, yes, so.
It's a long.
I was going to say, the circle of love is going to be too big, I mean.
We might have to have a small circle.
Small circles, well, breakout circles instead of, but if, you know, make, make an effort to go to that, because it is always a nice night to welcome the, the new teachers. So, again, just welcome everybody back, again, hope you enjoyed your summers, and it sounds like we're off to a great year. Thank you, Kathy and everybody, so welcome back, you know, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Sentience, we're adjourned.